I gave him the announcement that as of January, or whenever date, I will be there. Mr. Wilson managed to circle a rab over, I don't know why.
I kind of have this, remember there's this little thing?
Yeah.
Hey Christie, before you start, for those of you who are getting, if you're getting communication from folks wanting to talk or communicate about the Pooter Heights third subdivision approval, and I think Paul's been getting it, Paul's been passing it along without, don't review it, we're gonna have a public hearing Monday night, it's the same old.
I've just been forwarding it to Shane.
Mr. Rennermeyer has done the exact right thing, he's forwarded it to us, and he has said, please respond, so he hasn't even been in contact with them, so I think he has been a model board member on this issue.
Could you say that again, actually?
Yeah, but just be aware that there's some folks who have things to say. Are they so the public here?
To your town board email, or to individuals?
Town board email, yeah. And then there could also be, I haven't seen many this time, but we also have Avery Substation coming up also on Monday, so same drill for that, if you have any comments, please report on the staff, we'll take the liberty of responding to them and letting them know if you can't respond.
Just FYI too, I will be out starting Wednesday night, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I'm going to National Cities Conference in San Antonio, so if something comes up, Ken, you're in, you're in, I'll be back Saturday, my colleagues back Saturday, so, okay.
Christie sit.
He's gonna have a bed and his TV watching that game in Columbus, right, either playing in Columbus or in Ann Arbor.
Columbus, well this week is Penn State, in the following week, we're at.
So with that, let's call our special, town board special meeting to order for November 18, 2019, the time being 4:40 PM, first item of business is roll call, Ms. Aiker.
Mayor Christie Lennis.
Here.
Mayor Proten Ben Bennett.
Here.
Miles Baker.
Here.
Barry Wilson.
Here.
Paul Rennermeyer.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
David Salsky.
Here.
Next item is review of agenda by the board and addition of items of new business to the agenda for consideration. Is there any discussion on the agenda, if not, I would seek a motion to approve it as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor for Mr. Rennermeyer with a second for Mr. Wilson approving the agenda as presented, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, agenda has been approved unanimously. So moving on then to item B, board discussion items, 2020 budget final review, and I'm gonna imagine there's a couple of, is there some updates or anything, anybody wants to share, chat with us before?
So, so I would just say, staff did prepare a memo for you, kind of a condensed summary, that has all of the updated numbers, fund balances, et cetera, I had also sent the board out a memo following our last meeting with just kind of some updates based on that, so I want the board to see kind of the direction you've given staff so far, and the things that have changed and what the fund balances were, so we've got that, and then the mayor had asked last Friday for an update on kind of recently initiated reclassifications, and so staff prepared that, so I've got this going back to 2017, just kind of food for thought, so if you could pass these out to the board members, I've got some also for Dean and Ian, I've got some, they're black and red if you want, I just did seven color members.
And so.
So, I think there's just seven going down there.
What, what update are you referencing, because we've gotten that, like what date did it go up, so we can either pull it out of our packets?
Sure, so November 1st, I had sent.
Oh, so that's this thing, okay, I just wanna make sure we reckon all on the same, whatever.
Sure.
Okay.
You want questions?
Yep, go ahead.
Do you want to go through this first, or? I don't know what that.
No, I mean, this, I mean with all of this, this will fit maybe in a different discussion, so go ahead.
So I had a question on the Diamond Valley Park, it's still in this, so there's no update that makes you comfortable enough to take it out?
Well, I would say that they have not met the conditions of the agreement, which is building the multipurpose bill, which has not constructed, they have equipment out there, we admit multiple times with the developer and his team, I don't have any reason to believe that they wouldn't meet the conditions, but they have not met those yet, and so right now, yes, it's still in the budget because it's not done, so it's, you know, I had a talk with Dean and Carl and Eric Lucas on Friday, we went back and forth quite a bit and just ultimately decided, the condition hasn't been met yet, we have no reason to believe that it won't be met, but it still is not there yet, and so it's still in the budget.
Okay, thank you. What is our date, then, to say?
It was March 1st.
You haven't completed it first?
Yeah, I think it's March 1st.
So, yeah, we do have a plan, a tentative plan for how we're going to approach it between now and probably February 15th, to try to get everything squared away in anticipation at deadline.
And we do have, I think I put in a different note to the board that staff intends to give the board kind of an intensive session, kind of an update on what's going on with that development, so I'm sure you guys have a lot of questions, since the bosses who've chatted, so it'll be fun giving that for you here.
Shane, is there anything else in the capital projects list that is sort of placeholder as opposed to targeted for at least starting?
No, I would say that, you know, we did, the Eastman Park is in the park improvement fund, that reflects a $1.5 million expenditure, so we removed the two and a half million from the four, I would also point out, I guess, that we added $154,000 back on the delta, instead of fund from the board, and there's one other note, David. No, oh, the, the, we anticipate that the mill improvement is gonna actually be, go out of this year, not next year, that's just because now they're getting kind of leased up and we're talking, we anticipate we'll spend it this year, and that's fine, it was budgeted for. Oh, and then, I'm sorry, the transportation, the CIP reserve, and so we had, when we did the calculation for our reserve for CIP, part of Dean's calculation was that payment for the mill, so part of that reserve, that number included that $1.8 million, and what we did is we kind of double counted it, because we budgeted it, we also had it built into our reserve, and we didn't catch that until we thought, okay, what if they pay it this year, when we put out the reserve policy, and all of a sudden, our reserve policy is fine, as far as how much money we're carrying forward, so that's a long way of telling you that, based on that, we are well within our reserve policy to have the transportation reserve of $1 million under the CIP, so I know the board had kind of reluctantly taken that down to $850,000 to meet our reserve policy, because with the payment of the mill and now the calculation works out, staff went ahead and trumped that back up to $1 million, because that's going to be a previous traction from the board, let's carry a million forward, so that's that. So other than that, no, I think Diamond Valley is really just the kind of, the big expanse that we hope to not expand.
I have another question on the creamery, and I apologize, I feel like I was bringing it a little bit, do you have any information, it seemed like it was budgeted in 19, but all the work didn't get done, is that what happened, and it's carryover, or, I know we talked about taking it, we did take it out, but.
Yeah, yeah, it was budgeted in 19, and so what we had done, and we had started the process by doing just kind of the design, and so we had spent some money on that, but it was kind of the design and remodel that was budgeted for this year, so it was, you know, and I, and I hope the board always knows that, but if there's a project, even if it gets budgeted, there's questions that come up, and all of a sudden, it becomes unwise or impractical, or for whatever reason, you don't want to spend the money, staff is never gonna say, sorry, it's in the budget, we're doing it, and so because it hadn't been spent yet and the questions came up, we just kind of put a hole on the project, but it was budgeted for 19.
Okay, because it is a local designation, it's a historical building or something, so is there any work we have to do to make sure it doesn't fall over, or?
That's a good question, I don't, I don't know.
But I don't think it's on the national register.
It's a, it's a local registered, it's not national or state.
Right.
And that's a good question, I could ask that, I mean, I think any kind of building name and stuff, I don't think that would necessarily be a budget number that would come to the board, that would just be, you know, we have facility, O and M, different things that we do, I don't think that staff has any intent of letting that building just fall over.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Shane, on the NISF fund and the Purple Water Fund both showing negative balances moving forward, can we, something we can clean that up, you know, put it in a, in a fund that's positive, or?
Right.
Transfer, whatever, I know what Dean was doing, but still, it doesn't.
Well, and I think what Dean was doing was based on previous board direction, which is let's kind of track all these costs coming through, and that's how they wanted it accounted for, I agree with you, it doesn't look that great to have these negative things in there, so I would say if the board wants us to account for it differently, we certainly can, I think, and so Dean, do you want to interject now?
Yeah, that's, echo what you said, and I was talking with Tom and Ken beforehand, we used to, we always accounted for the O and M, the PIF, and the raw water separately, those were, but they are all, and still are all, part of the overall water fund, so looking at this chart here in your packet, that we have, the water fund has one, two, three, four, five, five different categories, but if you squash them, good term, you squash them all together, and for one fund balance, the water fund balance, we have a positive balance, it is kind of awkward, I agree, you know, if we could find a better way to do it, or just not do it at all, that's fine with me.
Well, it probably makes sense for us to separately account for NISF though, because it is such a big project, but, yeah, there may be a different way to skin that category.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's what I said, that is why we started that, that separate thing for NISF, because a few years ago, it started looking like that NISF program was not just some faraway dream, or nightmare, no matter how you look at it, but, so we wanted to break that out to show that we gotta, we have to do something about this, if we're still in the project, we have to do something about it, because we're not, we weren't collecting enough money, so.
Couldn't we, could we, I don't know how your spreadsheet is designed, but could we roll up these costs into one number and then put like a note in the?
Subplots.
Something like that?
I think later on, there's a fund balance by, by water fund, which I think includes all of that, like you said, on the aggregate, all of the elements that comprise the water fund workout.
Yeah.
The $8.9 million balance.
Or maybe just a note in the description there on the left, because David's right, it's other places shown that way, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
And you guys are focusing on this, but honestly, the one that bothers me more is the rec center, you know, accounting for those two funds separately and showing the original rec center with almost no balance, it feels pretty awkward to me to have the same building and have one with an $11 million balance, another one with a couple hundred thousand, it feels awkward.
I think that's important, though.
Right, well, is it required? Well, it's with the ballot language, and so I think what we're gonna do, talk to a guy named Dee Weiser, he's a, like a municipal bond attorney, and this is his role, you know, paper compliance and bond compliance, and I'd like to talk to him and just see if there's some way for us to do it to be, could obviously comply with the law, but to show it differently, because it really is, I mean, you know, it, one has fund balance and one doesn't, because when somebody comes in and pays at the door, where does that money go? And where to, you know, and it's just kind of the way we're counting for it, and we can do a lot of brain damage, making those more even, or we can maybe just find a different way with Dee Weiser to, to account for it and be compliant with everything.
As long as we're consistent every year on how we account for it, I think that's the most important part.
Right, well, and obviously, I think, but you know, the taxpayers had an intent of where the money goes, so I'd be damn certain we're showing them the money's going where it's supposed to go, and I know everybody feels that way, but if there's a way to do that and not be confusing, that would be better.
Well, and actually, what Miles is saying may tie into this sort of that typical note, note to the financials where you're showing a number that seems confusing, but it annotated in a way with an explanation.
Yeah, just like this is, yeah, down to the bottom.
Down to the bottom, yeah. We can do that with water as well, another note. For water.
And still keep them separate, though.
Yeah.
You made an important point, I think, it's really important for governments, people don't trust government, with the elections we just had and all the taxing issues that failed, repeatedly I hear people say, say we're gonna give money for X, but we don't believe that the money is really going to X, so how do we do it, it's really important that you can show people, we voted to point whatever it is for the rec center, that's exactly where that money went.
Dean, when we just increased the water rates, was there none of that that was designated to go into the NISF fund, or can, is it not allowed to really?
No, we, we accounted for the NISF project, just not separate, and in the next item here, we'll show that, that we accounted for the money we were gonna have to put in the NISF program, and that, that was rolled into this water rate study that we'll talk about tonight.
Yeah, but I think what Mr. Salsky is asking is if we're showing the NISF expenditures, is there any way to show that revenue offset against those expenditures to, you know, when we're showing the NISF how much we're spending, is there any way to offset with any of our water rates, is that, I think that's kind of what we're getting to.
Yeah, is there a revenue thing there that we're not capturing, because we put it in just simply into the overall rate bucket?
Yeah, right, and I think that's right, I think we have to put in the rate bucket, and I don't know how possible it would be, this, would that be possible, Dean?
I think, I think it would be, yeah, because we have, the guy that's gonna speak next, Ethan, he has a model thing, and we can tweak it, you know, and I think he could break out the, the NISF thing, that you're, the NISF revenue specifically.
Does show 173,000 in that revenue.
Yeah.
I know that would be beyond.
I think that's, on the building permits now, we're charging a small fee.
Yeah. Yeah, not near enough.
Okay, so again, yeah, so if you look on page four, it's been alluded to, all of our fund balances, you can see, we're growing our fund balances in many places, where they are going down, these are targeted expenditures, you know, to point like to the CIP, again, you know, these, a lot of the CIP projects are road improvement things, and things that Florida has highlighted, has been strategic, pretty important, other than that, I, you know, we're, our fund balances are very solid throughout the organization. Other than that, I, you know, we're, our fund balances are very solid throughout the organization, so.
And now do we fall within our capital improvement budget?
We do.
With making all of these, cause we had, and I can't find it now, but there was one single graph. Those are reclassifications, so.
My point was going to be, we don't pay for any salaries out of the capital improvement fund.
Okay. But yeah, but I mean, but we were over. I mean, we were over and then we, we had some conversation and then we made some decisions that we thought put us even and then we found out not, so we made some other recommendations, I think.
Well, no, so, so the board had made changes and we got it under compliance. And then, like I was mentioning before, Mayor, the, the CIP reserve had built into it that, that mill payment. We had that one point eight million dollars built into that number that we said this is the number we need to hit. But we'd also budgeted for it. And so we actually had that one point eight million dollars budgeted twice. We had it in reserve and we had it budgeted for twenty eighteen. And we caught that and we thought, okay, well, I'm sorry, for twenty eighteen. So when we realized we would pay them this year, we said, oh, we can take that out of the reserve. We also took it out of, we said, oh, well, we budget for it as well. So when we looked back and said, okay, what really does our CIP minimum balance need to be, we were well above that. Uh, which allowed us to take the transportation reserve from eight hundred fifty thousand back up to one million. So we're able to do that and we're still completely compliant.
Because the one thing that came in a memo afterwards, because we had talked specifically about the Pooter Park.
East and south.
Oh, east and south, yeah.
And we had made some recommendations based on some numbers that were in front of us, right? What we thought we would do. And then, and an email came back and said, oh, but then, cause we thought we were going to be in compliance if we made those recommendations, right?
Well, it, it, it was a four million dollar budget. The board had basically, when we went through and picked that, in my mind, it's about seven hundred fifty thousand.
Right.
And then got back, talked to staff and like, oh, well, we gotta bring up.
But we had, well, we had some numbers wrong, but, but my point is in that is how do we get presented that things are only costing us X amount? Then when it gets back to staff, we find out, oh, that's not the real number. Do you remember that memo? The, the numbers were much higher and so it was going to put us out of compliance again. So my only point to that is I know we have gone in and fixed that, but I don't like doing business like that. And I don't, I'm not saying that it was, but when staff is presenting us numbers, they need to present us the actual real numbers moving forward. Not a number that we, that we're going to all hone in around and say, oh, for only fifty thousand dollars, let's add that piece. And then it goes back to staff and they say, well, but there's, it's really a hundred, you know, eighty thousand dollars. Because by the time you, I mean, there was some of that after we had gone through and, and made those requests. And we found out that those were not the real numbers.
Okay, well, I, I would just say that, you know, we were taking a four million dollar budget and picking lines out. And there were like design and engineering, construction, all those other things. So, so as we, we pick through that budget, we didn't go down to the bottom and bring those things up. I, I think if we had done that same exercise in the room where we had tractor parts and rec and all the other folks in the room, somebody there might've said, well, wait, hold on, we got the engineering cost. So I think part of it was just the approach we'd taken. I mean, the numbers were there.
Cause there was some, because of some of the things we did, it led to additional costs being needed in order to.
That's right. That, that, that's right. So I, I think the numbers were there. I think, I mean, all those numbers were in that four point one million dollar budget that was presented to the board. It was when we went through and tried to pick through some stuff and it was just, you know, I didn't think about it at the time when we were going through it saying, well, jeez, how much engineering do we need to come up?
Cause of course we were all honed in on whatever that, we had that gap, like, okay, well, let's do something with that money. Let's try to make something happen. And I think it was disappointing that we still couldn't quite get there because.
And so, so this is all park, park improvement fund. So that, that one point five million that, so if we took everything that the board greenlit that night, and again, I understand if you want to, to call that back, but everything that you greenlit has an estimate of about one point five million. That is represented in the budget now, so we brought those costs forward in here. And I think Carl, if you take the, uh, I had this earlier. I think if you assume we don't spend the four million dollars in Diamond Valley, uh, we were projecting about a twelve million dollar. Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, we're, we're projecting about a twelve million dollar carry forward in that fund, so.
Which we're going to need because there's those five or five parks yet to come, right? They have to be built out of that fund.
But they're going, we're going to add to that.
There'll be additional park revenues from new development.
It was already going to be short. Right, well, in the, in the big, the big project that, that we talked about the other day that is in the end, the park master plan is the parking. And it's a little bit ironic, but I think.
Can we use that? Can we use park funding for that?
For, for parking at the park.
Parking in the park, okay, good.
Um, so its improvements at the park, they're only for the park, so.
I thought it was already in the park fund, cause I think I asked that question.
Well, exactly, one point five million is in there now and so.
No, I questioned the validity of parking in the park fund.
You did.
And Dean said, yeah, it's a perfectly acceptable.
Right, yeah, it's just, yeah, cause it's for the park, it's all parks.
I was just trying to save park money for other stuff.
Park can use in one point five.
Can you use, can you, can we use the park fund for any of this open space stuff that's on the radar? Or does, is it specific? I mean, cause it's, it's kind of like, I mean, it's.
The new park.
I mean, or do you have to, or would that be, would that qualify it? Because we had that conversation recently somewhere, right? Like how do we, I mean, I know it's not going to cover everything, but is it, does it start some kind of a funding source mechanism?
Conservation Trust.
Dean has the answer.
I don't know. Well, CTF, we certainly can use conservation trust fund monies for that. The, the park improvement fund, I would.
So a year and a half ago, you changed the neighborhood, you killed the neighborhood park fund. Because we had, we're, we, we've collected enough to build the four or five neighborhood parks. But we still swapped in a community park trails and open space fee fund that is intended to pay for those things, those three things.
So it can't be for.
But it's very small right now, probably in its infancy.
Yeah, I mean, that, that fee balances, although, you know, we're, we're.
Yeah, but it, but again, it's, it's kind of to the mayor's point earlier. Um, so our, our community park fund, neighborhood parks, so park development fees is, is actually pretty well held. We have about six point eight million in that. So, um, we've had a lot of development money going in, into that. The, um, concern of course is we do have other things in the park master plan, other priorities identified. So if we, if we do use this for open space, we're going to still have, you know, Hawk and Collar Park or something down the line. Right, is going to be not funded.
I have just a point to make if people are watching and based on this page four. If we didn't have the Diamond Valley four million, we would basically, I mean, right now it looks like we're spending more than we've taken in. But if we took out that four million dollars that we're probably not going to spend, it would almost be.
Right.
Seventy-five million in revenue, seventy-nine in expenses. If we backed out the four, we'd be back at seventy-five in expenses.
Right, yeah, it, it would be, yeah, that's right. I mean, in, in the park improvement fund specifically, it's going to be a, uh, basically a flat year. That the money that comes in and the money that goes out.
Right.
And with Eastwood Park, it would be just a break even year.
And with Diamond Valley, it says we're spending six point two.
Well, I'm sorry, where?
On the park improvement fund? I was on that page four, maybe I'm, I assume the six point two proposed expenditure has four million for Diamond Valley.
It does, it does.
So it looks like we're way over spending what we've collected, but we're not going to spend that.
Yes, but we're not spending six point two in Diamond Valley though. It's four million there and the other ones are the other parks. And I can, I can pull that detail if you like.
No, I'm sorry, that wasn't my question.
Okay.
But as soon as we know that they're taking, that that's happening, will all this readjust?
Well, if we know that.
So that we have a different.
We have to approve it.
Summary until again.
If we, depending on tonight's conversation, staff's intent was to have the board adopt the budget on November twenty fifth, depending on tonight's conversation and where we are. Um, so if we, I would say probably not. It would probably just get adopted that way. And even if this didn't get adopted till December ninth, I still don't think it would, we would know by then. But I tell you again, you know, just because in the budget, we would by no way spend the money if it's.
But I'm, I'm even talking about if this happens in February, will we, will you go back in and show these numbers differently?
No.
No, you'll still show them the same.
No, what Shane was saying.
Cause once the budget's adopted, that's how those numbers have to carry and, and look.
The actual.
You have to, that's why from year to year, sometimes we go in and make those budget readjustments.
There's a supplemental. And so, yeah, if we did a supplemental, we, we would reflect it at that point. And again, the state, um, just, yeah, so as long as you don't spend more than you said, you, you don't really have a concern. So if we put it in there and we don't spend it, there's no concern. If you spend more than you said, you have to, you know, that's a problem. Well, not a problem, but it's something you need to rectify.
Hey Dean, on the sewer fund ending balance, kind of.
Are you, if you're looking at a page, would you just reference it so we can go to it?
Page two.
We got tons of different stuff.
Ending balances based on the budget.
Page two.
Yes, of course. It's page four thirty-six.
Sorry, um, page four thirty-six, thank you. The sewer fund showing the ending balance of ten point nine million. And when are we firing up that second bay in the sewer, in the treatment plant?
Well, we've been talking about perhaps taking on more of the sewer treatment from Severance. So if we do that, the, the, the exact timing of when we would do that, I'm not certain.
Yeah, so I, I plan on having Dennis Markham come and present it to the board very soon to give you an update in a workshop. I think maybe that's, have we scheduled that yet, Chris? No, but, so that's happening very soon. So, um, right now, the, the, this town is contractually obligated to take up to one million, one million gallons a day from this sewer plant.
That sounds about right.
Yeah, that's right. And, and we're a little above one hundred thousand, um, right now. So a lot of it depends on, yeah, yeah, so we could get a lot more affluent from the town of Severance, so.
There's all that stuff go that we don't get.
Uh, they've got their own plant, but their plant, they do. So, so about half of their effluent goes to their existing plant. About half of it comes to Windsor, but their existing plant is pretty old. And, and as you guys know, from compliance standpoint, these upgrades come pretty expensively. And at this point, is a, I'll make upgrades rather than adding to their amount they can treat. They're just staying in compliance. So it's not like they spend a million dollars and get more gallons to treat there. They spend money and it's just with the same amount of affluent. And so we have had discussions with the town and, and they're looking at some different options. One option is building their own sewer treatment plant. Another option is really looking at the town of Windsor and the, are the one million gallons we're already contractually obligated and, and sending more to us. So we have had Dennis Markham, I've been working with him, run some different models based on the year and when things happen, the severance, our own growth. And, and that's a conversation I want to get in front of the port so you can see. But I think that it's probably twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I mean, it's imminent, you know, it's not next year, but it's, and, and that's going to be, you know, probably twenty-two, twenty-three when we're doing the planning, you know, when we're actually in design for the plant.
Well, the rule of thumb used to be when you're eighty percent capacity, you've got to start thinking.
Well, that's actually, it's not a rule of thumb, it's statutory requirement. Yeah, so the, the.
It's a big size.
Yeah, yeah. So, so basically that, that's, that's the law. If you're, if you're at eighty percent capacity, you need to be currently in design. So that's, um, so anyway, we're, we're aware of all that stuff and we certainly, I heard a story maybe a year ago where a municipality had to stop taking building permits because they were out of capacity.
But is that here that we're going to build, we're going to continue building this balance for that day when we need to spend?
Right, and, and we're also doing this sewer rate study this next year and for the same idea, you know, we're, I just, I want to be comfortable that geez, when we hit that year, we've got enough in our fund balance.
So that and item three are what we're going to start doing to fix that gap that we currently have in that month. Is that right?
Well, number three is storm drain.
Storm drain, yeah, so that, this is.
But don't we have a, we have a gap there too, right?
Right, we do. That's, we do. And so next year, we're going to have basically, I don't know if it'll be Stan Deck. It'll be a Stan Deck light company, take a look at our sewer rates, our modeling and our expenditure side and do the same thing we're doing with water, with NISF. Just run those models and, and test to make sure that when we hit that date, we have enough money.
There's certainly some tension between trying to service another community in some volume. And, and so you need to expand your plant or have staff or do something to handle an additional million gallons per day. But then the contract ends and whoops, there you are with the excess capacity. That worsens the other way around.
Right.
So if there's a contract, it seems like you'd really want it to be a long-term commitment. Cause you're going to, you're going to build your plant and staff according and anticipating an additional volume.
Right, well, and I, and I like the idea. I'm glad the town signed the contract because I think it gives us the ability to partner with one of our neighbors and gives the town a chance to lead in the area and, and do what we hope our other bigger neighbors do.
Which is why.
Us and, and make good decisions for our community and, 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 you know, let us grow. So, um, yeah, it's, and, you know, really with the amount of volume that's going through that plant, Severance is, you know, it's significant, but it's, most of our growth, like our traffic study, most of our growth is our problem, you know? So, so most of the plant designs, the, the Severance needle doesn't move a whole lot with their timeframe. It may move us up a year, it's not going to move us up ten years.
Dean, do you recall how long the term of that contract is?
I don't recall, but I can check it.
Add to your. So is it a sort of take or pay million, they've got to give us?
No, they need to purchase capacity ahead of time, so they're supposed to go and purchase capacity with our plant. And then as they sell tabs, they build into that. And as they get close, now we're sending them, I think.
So they prepay and?
They do. Historically, that has been a little bit loosey-goosey, but, but we met with them this year and, um, they did a great job. So the board will remember and know from Dean that we received a large check from Severance. And that was them getting caught up and purchasing some additional capacity. And so now I think we're going to try to give them maybe quarterly updates to let them know where the flows are. So as they start to get close next time, they'll have a good heads up. But yeah, that, that's basically how it works. So it's not a take or pay, they just kind of, they're supposed to buy that capacity ahead of time.
Severance budget is healthy enough to make that commitment?
Well, they've, I, I don't know that they're committed to a million gallons right now, but you know, it's, it's a little bit balancing because, you know, if they don't purchase the capacity, they don't have it, so.
Okay, no, I think that old property tax.
Well, no, they, they got, you know, they are collecting fees from developers, you know, so I think that they.
They had a dollar store open.
I know.
For general dollar, I think is what it's called.
Sales tax dollars leaking from Windsor, it's really.
The mayor did tell me that there's some movement on, on maybe some, on a commercial retail venture that I'm sure, maybe before the end of this year, that we'll need to have some discussion on, at least a starting discussion between mayors and maybe managers. And then the next year, you guys will be brought in. So hopefully, maybe there's something else going there. Miles had something.
Any question on page six of thirty, thirty-six or page four in the packet? There's a line item under the revenue source called fines and royalties and it's, I assume it's oil, gas royalties?
I think it's my speeding ticket.
I wonder if we're getting to a point, like why would those be together? Maybe when we were, there was no royalties, it made sense. Is it worth breaking those out or is that just, it's just such a huge jump?
Well, over, over four years, that's still, yeah, you're right.
So, Carl, you have that?
Yeah, we can break it up if it's a huge.
Yeah, if it's worth it, I don't know. I think something along the, along the way, it was kind of co-megaled and given the amount.
I mean, it was a hundred and sixty-four thousand, why not come in like?
Yeah.
Right. The number now or soon.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that number may soon be shrinking again.
Now it's one sixty-eight or.
Unless we get more speeding tickets.
So Dean, what's your question? The term of that IGA, the duration?
During thirty-five years from two thousand and four.
And it, does it have any automatic renewals or anything?
It does say that.
That's.
Cause I would think any capacity. Well, thirty-five.
After that, either party may get noticed to the other side, it terminates line item, or it's a five-year window.
But, but I would also wonder though, if they purchase capacity from the town and they're, they purchased two hundred thousand gallons, I would think they would have that forever. It'd be similar to us, like it is in its water plant. If we purchased capacity.
Terminates agreement. Terminates agreement. I think you can walk away from capacity.
The fines and royalties.
Okay, they have two different conversations. Let's finish this one.
Okay, I'm sorry. So the current agreement.
I just want to, I want to hear both, both conversations, so.
The current agreement with Severance is thirty five years. And we were kind of talking about, you know, I, my opinion would be if they purchase capacity even at the end of thirty five years, maybe we don't have to sell them anymore, but I would think they would still have that capacity in our plant. Ian has a different opinion, but I would say I think that in thirty five years, we can cross that bridge, I guess.
Twenty thirty eight.
I have a question on that conversation.
Okay, go ahead, Miles.
And I don't want to preempt your presentation, but something, I, I just, you said it's a small portion that they want? I would hate for us to sell this huge amount and then us be stuck in thirty years with not capacity for us.
Oh, I see. Well, yeah, well, the one million gallons, I wouldn't propose to the board that we increase that amount. I think it's a lot of capacity, but I believe it was in order to build an interceptor line up to Severance. I think that that's why, in order to get them to finance and participate, we entered into this agreement with them. So it was a little bit of quid pro quo. Okay, if you do this.
That's such a dirty word.
Let's, you know, I took sex class training earlier, so. But, but it was, I believe it was part of the gray communities coming together and people wanted to. So that's why we did that. I wouldn't propose to them that, but we're locked down till twenty thirty eight with one million gallons.
And now, was there a question?
No, we were just still asking about the fines and royalties.
I have an answer for you. Seventeen.
Well, what goes into that's what we were asking.
In this particular chart, this twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen actual numbers there, one sixty four and one seventy seven. Those were strictly court fines. And now on this spreadsheet here, we didn't get, go from one seventy seven to two point three in strictly court fines. That includes our, our gas royalties.
What were we doing with gas royalties in seventeen, sixteen, et cetera?
We were putting them in the capital improvement.
Okay, that's what I thought. Because I remember when our previous town manager came to us in seventeen and said, I got this check for a million bucks. And what do we do with it? I remember we put it into the general fund.
Yeah, he's cracking the web, right?
Any question? I want to talk about some things that were presented that pertain to personnel. But before we go onto that, any other questions concerning CIP stuff that we have?
Just one other question, Mayor. And it's probably, it may tie into CIP. On the, on your, the packet page six again, it's the table where you're showing revenues and revenue by source. Plant investment fees shows six point two million. But I'm guessing that we're supposed to be talking about potential rate increase, right? This, I have this number on the sending reflects a similar.
You're looking at plant investment fees, six point two? Yeah, that's, that's fees paid at time of building permit.
Based on today, the TAP balance projected is based on today's fees charged. And I think, and you said we may be talking about.
Well, we're gonna talk about water rates today. I don't, I don't remember seeing anything about the TAPs. So I think that the TAPs are not recommended to.
To change, okay.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Anything else? Capital improvement projects? There were a couple of things when we had HR present to us, and I think one of the presentations was part-time, taking part-time staff and benefiting them.
Right, and that was actually withdrawn. That was the original proposal. So the only benefit that would go to part-time under the current proposal is the EAS, which is basically if we have some kind of incident, they need some kind of greed counseling.
Oh, so we're not extending insurance and to part-time?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Or EAP, right?
EAP, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Which is kind of a good benefit, but at a low cost.
That's right. And actually, by adding them, because we had more to our plan, the numbers for our full-time employees went down. So the incremental cost was very miniscule. And it was in the numbers when we gave you the last presentation there, and I don't remember, but it's, so that's in there.
HR was on October stuff. Was that, is that what you're talking to about? When HR presented all their stuff?
Yeah, that'd be right.
Which seems like a year ago.
It really does.
My God, five weeks.
Okay, so that's been withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I don't know, two other items that I don't want to make changes necessarily in this budget, but I just want some recognition about some trends and maybe, I think, as, as future boards look in the future, maybe some things to think about. So I asked for this reclassification because if you look at that, I mean, the first time, I mean, I'm sure it wasn't the first year we looked at that in twenty seventeen, but we had some reclassifications and they totaled.
Fifty seven thousand.
Yeah, or nine thousand. Total in twenty seventeen, nine thousand. And then in twenty eighteen, it grew to a hundred and six. And then in twenty nineteen, another hundred and ten. And this year, or next year, you got like a hundred and forty four thousand. And so my, my question is, how do we as future boards prevent that from happening as much? Because if we're doing things correctly, you know what I mean, why do we have such huge extensive jumps in one year's time? I mean, I can see sometimes, like you might have, you know, nine thousand or, but to go to over a hundred thousand dollars in reclass, something's not being done correctly in the beginning processes.
But if you look at like the twenty eighteen mid-year and the twenty eighteen budget, that's a hundred and fifty two thousand. You know, when you take these like the, you know, because I know that I think Wes, LaBanche, he'd come to the board and there's some mid-year and there's a bunch of things. So, and two, you know, some of these, like when you look at, yeah, I still stand by, I think if these departments are looking at their department, and I'm really kind of pushing out of, we need staff, we're gonna have staff, but I think let's look at what we have. And let's look at our staff. Is there a different way that we do business, something in here? Yeah, I would use, I think that, like Chief, for example, is doing a great job looking and, you know, we're not adding a lot of people next year. We're taking, you know, saying, you know, I need more leaders on these, on, you know, when we have these guys out, you know, we don't necessarily need a lot more bodies. We just need somebody who's in charge. And so they're reorganizing, bringing a couple sergeants on, also identifying a commander position, bringing them up. I think, you know, Steve, Chief has been a smart manager of what he's doing with the people. So I would just say, I don't think it's necessarily a negative trend. I think it's good to look to say, geez, what's happening here? But I think that looking at people and saying like, for IT, for example, you know, they had requested a business analyst, and I was hesitant to do that. I just thought, I don't really feel comfortable adding this really high-cost position to the budget this year. And we also had the security analyst we couldn't fill last year. And so we really challenged Corinne. What do you, what can you do with your people? You know, what can we do with our current constraints, with the challenges we have? So I think going through and really taking a hard look at the pieces they have and the people and moving the bodies around, I don't think it's a negative thing there. I really don't. I mean, it's good for the board to be aware of this, and these things have costs, but it's not, you know, even doing salary surveys every couple of years, that should make sure that we have for the most part people where they need to be. But as people go, you know, over time, if we have somebody in finance who goes and gets her accounting degree, and all of a sudden she's doing higher level stuff, we either look and say, geez, can we elevate her in this organization? Or she goes to level four columns, we lose, but training kind of goes within employee. So I don't, I don't think it's a negative trend, I really don't. I think it's, I'm proud of the folks and the things that have come through here. And again, if there's other reclasses and other requests we get, and it's like, yeah, that doesn't really make sense. You know, we're trying to, you know, I don't, I don't think you should reclassify somebody for the sole purpose because they've got another job offered somewhere. I don't think that's a reason to reclassify them. Sometimes you just lose folks, but I think there are good reasons to take a look at those and do them. So again, I just would put that out as the kind of counterthought.
When I was in corporate America, we had a natural progression on engineering organization. You might have entry level, but then you had specialist, expert and master. And throughout, it might take someone ten, fifteen years to become a master, but it was like a growth within a job.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a retention thing. And what we found was so, so sometimes when someone got promoted, there may or may not be a pay increase because they could already be on the curve. But, but over time, what we found is sometimes the expert and masters might leave eventually or retire. And you had, had people coming in at the bottom constantly and kind of being reclassified. And so we looked more at the overall, what were we paying people overall? Kind of the cost per headcount or cost per job.
So what you're bringing up, I would say, I think engineering is a, is a good department to look at like that, you know. So we just hired an engineering manager, and I think he's gonna be phenomenal. But we have four other engineers in there that are all brilliant and really good people, long-term employees. But we just have engineer, you know, we don't have engineer one, two, three. We don't really have any of that career ladder stuff. And I think with this next wage study, we're gonna talk to Candy Sideris about that, about, you know, is there a way to create a little bit more traction in here? So when you have these engineers that have been here for fifteen years, and I'll tell you, it'd be sometimes a Peter Principle, you know, you could take a brilliant engineer, make him a manager, and they would be, they would be miserable, and they wouldn't be near as good at that as they are in engineering. But that's not a reason, they shouldn't have that career progression, right? And so, yeah, what you're bringing up, we talked about those things. And we can have some of those positions that, you know, not everybody can be a manager, not everybody should be a manager. But when you have people who are really top of their game, their profession, you should have the ability to give them some kind of, you know, step up.
Because they bring more to the table than the average engineer.
That is right. And I don't, I don't want to talk about specific personnel, but I'm telling you, when I'm talking about these guys, these people pop in my head. Because we have some world-class engineers upstairs and, you know, right now, they're just all engineered.
So the hundred and forty four is thirteen people as well. And just for layman's terms, this is like, these are promotions, right, within the organization versus maybe hiring new?
Right, it could be seen that way. Yeah, I think in a lot of ways, you know, some, you know, just to look at the finance side, Dean is really thinking about, you know, succession planning. He's really looking at who steps in when he goes, what kind of leaders are we developing there? You know, we don't have a lot of people in there, so I think he's done a good job really taking a look at his department. You know, part of, part of the reclassification again just came from the recognition when Dean was out earlier this year with his injury, how talented a group we have, how much work they're doing. And I think it's just really kind of recognizing, my God, you know, you've been doing this work for years, and we're just recognizing that. Other parts, I think, are a little bit more succession planning. You know, I just talked to Chief on Friday, and, you know, he's really thinking about that with his leadership team and these commanders. You know, who of his command staff actually wants to be chief, you know, are there enough people? Are we identifying these folks? You know, we'd love to have a great internal candidate for chief of police. When chief retires, it'd be better if we had two great internal candidates, or if we had three or four. So these guys are always.
Well, and I know he's got a new request. Is that, or a new request is gonna be coming? Is that, is that identified here or is that?
No, he talked to me on Friday. And, yeah, so it's, it's not in that. So in basically.
Will that be coming to us in January to add that additionally?
Yeah, and so it's, I'm gonna tread a little bit here. So he interviewed for commander. There are actually two internal candidates that are phenomenal. And so instead of bringing on one commander, he talked to me about would it be possible to bring in two? We looked at the numbers and it would be really fairly negligible, I think, kind of your point earlier that, you know, one of the sergeants is so senior that it would be, he's basically that commander pay almost now anyway. And so he and I talked about it, and I said I would mention to the board at some point, but that's kind of the idea. Well, I had to find out, bring it up tonight, I plan on doing it at some other point, but I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the question. So that's the idea. So even then, I think that he had a well-fought-out plan, bringing on a third commander. But I think also when he was presented with this data and really saw how the organization could evolve, you know, I appreciate the fact that he came to me and said, look, you know, I didn't think about this before, but I thought about this now, and I think this is better for the police department and the town. And I agree with him. It's, it's a better setup, so. You know, it's something that, and I want.
But actually, it will save us money, is what, is what I was told.
I, I think it'll be, I haven't really got to the numbers, I think it'll be probably net neutral. I think it won't really be a cost to the town. I think it'll be pretty close to being even wash. So, you know, anyway, so, so again, he talked to me about it on Friday, and I hadn't, it's not reflected in there.
But that would be an additional request that we would just add in then, like in January to the budget or something?
Again, I don't, I don't think there's gonna be a financial cost to it.
Since it'll be kind of an even thing, it's just a re-change of.
Right, right. And so now, I don't know if the board wants something more than writing, but if, if you guys wouldn't act surprised if we had a fourth commander instead of a third, we could just make that effective and just go through and have it done sooner than later. So if you want to see those numbers, we could run the metrics. But I don't think from budgetary standpoint, Mayor, it's gonna be hell of a deal.
It's not just the numbers, though. I mean, it's the organizational structure, the chart responsibilities, duties, it's what's driving it. And you have somebody really, really talented and can fill the role, it doesn't necessarily mean it's created. So I'd like, this needs more discussion.
Okay, okay.
The other piece that I think that, that future boards may have to kind of really look at and wrestle with a little bit is as healthcare and all of those costs continue to increase, I mean, we are very, very generous with an eighty percent. And I think that that is something that may be in the future, that percentage really might have to be looked at.
So, so we're going to, and we're at.
And look at alternative health option plans?
And we're at ninety percent, Mayor. So, so we are going to, with HR this year, we're gonna actually RFP and talk about going self-insured. So that is something that I want to look at. I'm not saying that we're gonna do that, but, you know, there's, the last day I worked for, we're self-insured. And we're able to save a lot of those kind of middle costs by doing that, by administering our own plan. So I want to at least go through that exercise. So I do agree, healthcare is increasing, and my preference would be, if we could just save the news college some money and not take away benefit from employees, that would be my preference, but.
But yes, I have to look at what's, in the private sector, nobody sees that type of, you know what I mean, that, that percentage paid in an employer situation. And those are the very people that are paying these salaries and these positions. And so I think we also, though, I mean, while we value them, but to be fair, to, as you look around, you, I think you have to balance that too, and what's, and what is really reasonable and what's realistic. You know, Loveland decreased their entire budget across the board this year five percent in every single, around every single fund in every single capacity. So.
Yes.
We got a better finance director.
We do.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Does that mean the foundry is not generating income? Does that mean that the foundry is not generating income?
That Loveland and Four Collins, I think both are such large organizations, and they have so much going on retail-wise. You know, if they're just up two percent, they forecast three percent, it matters. It's just, it's just big numbers. So I think that they've still grown, they just haven't seen kind of the residential, the new starts the way that we've seen. You know, there's been as hot as we've been, Loveland just hasn't seen those.
But I also think, I mean, you might have been somewhat joking, but it's, it's true, though, that we have had our finance director who has led us to be very fiscally good stewards of our money and not be overzealous. Even when we have some very good-looking, you know, numbers and budgets, I don't believe that previous boards or this board has said, well, why not? I mean, why not do that project? We got the money sitting there because we know it's, we're always looking to the future. We want to ensure that stability for a long period of time. And you just can't be thinking about, you know, today or two years out. We have to think, and so kudos to Dean and staff and everybody who has kept us on that track. Because I do think that that is one of the reasons why that we're not looking at that.
Not in all the history about healthcare, but the one thing I was kind of surprised at, I think there was a comment at some point in time about, we haven't put it out for an RFP for a long time. It is, we have not put the health plan. It is like, we have not put the health plans out to R P for a long time. We had just kept kind of re-upping with the same company. And so much has changed that, you know, we might, like you said, we may be able to self-insure.
We did do an R P this year.
Right.
It just wasn't, I was really pushing to to get that self-insured R P out as well, to take a look at that. And it was just um a lot to get together. And so that didn't happen. So staff's going to start working on that basically at the start of the new year. So we can bid that out as well.
Are any other communities around us self-insured? I think Laramore County is, but I don't know, Fort Collins and Loveland, do they?
Yeah, that's a good question. I I I I just don't honestly.
Laramore County, they're self-insured. I think they even went to Banner Health and U C Health and negotiated rates directly with those people.
That that's exactly what you do. And and so when you're when you're self-insured, you still have a T P A. I mean, you're still working with somebody, you know, you're uh if if Ian picks up the phone and calls somebody, you've got a third party that's administering your plan for you. And then you also have a broker and and those really good brokers are out. Um, having those things with Banner Banner Health saying, what the heck, you know, we need to get on this plan, we need to pull discount. They're looking at your prescription drug plan, your benefit, to make sure that you're not paying seven hundred dollars for an aspirin at King Super. So, you know, you 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 do have other professionals, but I think you can still save from an overhead standpoint, ten, fifteen percent um versus just going through a a normal broker. So if you kind of take that on internally and then you can really tailor your plan to say, yeah, we'll cover this, no one are going to cover that, and you put that right into your plan benefits.
We were looking at this down at the state when it was with Representative Buck. And it it really had to do with these concierge concierge services and be the ability to structure your own self-insured. And if a company had a hundred employees or more, something like ninety-two percent of them self-insured. I mean, it's just that is the model that any any one of these.
The number I've always heard is is more than that. If you have over three hundred people on your plan, some employees plus spouses, you hit a certain number where you can self-insure and you don't have to worry about like the catastrophic thing that bankrupts your plan. So you get enough people on it. And so I think it was three hundred, three fifty that I've heard. So, yes.
Might be a moot point, I won't be around, but I think when you talk about the à la carte plan, I would hate for somebody making these decisions of what is and is not covered that, it's kind of weird, like, oh, we we're going to save a few bucks, we're not going to cover your.
So so we would take a, we'd take a normal plan, we would have a committee, we would understand what the costs are. And so you're right, it could, but that's what people are doing right now with your current health plan. So they're they're just procedures that seem like, geez, that's something that that we don't feel comfortable covering. Um, but, yeah.
Well, on the on the flip side, I use this as an example, I was telling a couple of people at coffee with the mayor about the um like where my wife works, the only option they have is an H S A option, that's it. And it's like a thirty-five hundred dollar deductible per household per, you know. And if a certain health event occurs within the course of the year that would lead them to meet that deductible all in one shot, you know, a big health event, the employer steps in to help cover a portion of that to meet the stopgap, which is still cheaper than shedding out the money in premiums, still having deductibles and all of that on top of it. And on top of that, they actually put uh a little amount every single month into our H S A to help us have money for the incidentals, for a couple of office calls, stuff like that. My point is, is it's still cheaper for the employer to go with a high deductible plan. As much as that scares people that think high deductible, how's that compared to what I have now? I'm just saying there's other ways it can be structured that could save the town.
Supplement directly.
Any other budget questions?
One thing really quick, um about the commander thing again. There's, how how many sergeants are there right now? How, what was the? If it was going to be a net neutral, I don't understand why we're, I I was trying to understand David's comment and what you had said or what I I'm trying to to grasp, but. I thought we kind of ended that like David spoke for the whole board here or something like that. I was trying to.
So what was David's, what was your point again? Like, if he can manage his budget and shift titles, do we? What was your concern?
It seemed to be this conclusion or was seemingly shifting toward a conclusion, saying, well, budget neutral, why not do it? But but it's really altering the organizational structure of the department. And I think it would seem like a different discussion to say, okay, you have a qualified person who could meet this title and meet this scope of responsibility. So what? I mean, why? Why would you create another position and how does, what does this do to your organizational structure, your reporting hierarchy? And does it make sense? So if that highly qualified person leaves, do you now have an empty position for commander? Or or did you not, do you not need that commander?
It's about, I believe that it, and I could, I am asking this of Shane, but isn't it a reclassification based based upon retention of sergeants that would be given a new title of commander? It's not necessarily shifting so much salaries and stuff like that, is it? From what you were saying, isn't it a?
I I think it's, um, yeah, I I would say I'd I'd rather Chief kind of explain how it how it lays down.
So we can do that sometime in January, right? Or, I mean, is that what I'm hearing, David, that you you want to have a work session or hear about whatever that plan is?
The rationale and.
Does the budget get affected by whatever or is that?
It shouldn't. I I I, and I haven't.
So it could still happen in January after you, without the budget being at issue or something based upon.
That's right. There there would be, I don't think, any budgetary implications.
Okay, okay.
And even if it were.
Minor.
Yeah, it would be.
Any other final questions about the budget? Because then I, what will happen after this is you're going to prepare it and bring it before us for adoption, is that correct? We would be done.
This guy there, see that smile?
Okay, no final but, so I'm going to say, should we take a little break and go grab dinner and before, because our next item then moves us to water rate presentation and come back for that.
This is a comparison.
Oh, yeah.
Reclassification.
And they're going to talk to us and present Water Rates presentation. So we'll let you get started.
This is Mayor Town Board. My name, as I just mentioned, my name is Ethan Harden. Work with Stantec, with Siwan Rao. We were here last year and worked on the 10-year water financial plan. And we've come back this year to make sure everything is still tracking as we projected and to offer some more scenarios of things have changed since the last time we spoke. So today we'll talk about how, what those changes look like, the key drivers that are pushing the NIS project back. And then we'll look at, as I mentioned, a couple of different scenarios. So since we were here last time, we've updated the 2018 actuals to include the revenues and expenses. We've inputted our 2019 original budget and then again, final budget. And we're incorporating the 2020 proposed budget in our most recent update in order to correctly project the costs in the future. We've additionally updated the capital improvement plan and we've looked at different types of R and R projects, water acquisition, as we've spoken with John, the NIS project, which we all know about, and then the water treatment plant, which I'll get to here in a minute. Lastly, we've gone through the whole model again and validated every single assumption with your staff on all of the key assumptions, whether it's growth paying for growth or different types of escalation factors, how capital is being escalated in the future. We've looked at everything and have come here today. And so lastly, we ran all those numbers and wanted to reevaluate the scenarios from what we showed last time, which was the 9% rate increase. And so we'll get into those here at the end. So just to remind everyone, what we look at in a water and wastewater rate study, we have both use of funds and a source of funds that we want to be able to model and bring those numbers into our financial plan. So we have different policy targets that set these basically limits and constraints of what we need to solve for. We look at O and M costs, as I mentioned, the capital improvement, the debt service costs, both existing, and then we project new debt as well, understanding that different types of debt will need to be taken on in order to accomplish different sort of projects and goals of utility. And then we match that with our sources of funds, which would be like our water resource fee and other impact fees, other types of loans that are being issued. So we'll bring in proceeds from that, obviously our rate charges, and then everything gets tied in with the fund balance that we're currently holding.
Ethan.
Yes, sir.
The policy target, can you go exactly what is in that?
Yes, I'd love to. So some of the financial goals that we take a look at are maintaining the debt service coverage at 120%. And so debt service coverage is going to be, what is our rate, our rate component? So our, the rate revenue that's coming in, and then we have to cover our O and M and our capital costs from that. And so that doesn't take into account fund balance. And so when we get, for example, if we were going to issue debt, we can't have a fund balance and cover our debt service coverage with that. It has to be recurring revenues that are coming into the system. And that's based off of bond covenant that we are currently holding. Next, we look at maintaining 90 days cash on hand within our water operating fund. One of the goals that we look at as the town board would like to see is obviously minimizing rate impacts and then having growth pay for growth. So one of the things we talked about last year was a specific percentage, and we really brought that up as that was one of the things that moved within the scenarios. I will mention all the scenarios that we are going to look at tonight. That rate payer percentage will have dropped from last year, and I'll get into that when we get there.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I got to see this last week, Water Service Board. I had a question about the 90-day cash on hand.
Yes.
He was there and I asked if that was enough. And the answer was, yes, plus we have more than that on reserve or cash on hand.
Currently, we have.
Are you trying to eat? It's like going to dinner, they went to your.
You just want the budgets, huh?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sure. Yes, okay.
Currently, the Water Enterprise Fund holds more than 90 days cash on hand, but in the future, we are projecting that that fund balance will draw down as we pay cash for capital projects. And then lastly is adequately fund our water resource needs. And so the big key of this is going to be our NIS project, and we want to make sure we're adequately funding that, as well as working with John here to project a couple of different other water resources that we would need, whether it's WISH shares or other things that we would look at. So the key drivers of the water rate projection that we're going to look at this evening are the growth. And so as we touched on, if you remember last year, we had really high growth numbers in the town of Windsor. We wanted to, what we did last year as well is if we were backing off that growth, what would we have to then raise the rates by to ensure that we're being solvent and working correctly as utilities? So we've looked at a couple of different growth projections, and I'll show you those. The next one is the mill levy that did not pass in Northwell County last week. And so with that, we're taking a conservative approach and taking 10% increases for our Northwell County treatment costs into the future. So that's 2020 through 2024. We think that's a conservative projection. They could be anywhere from 5% to 10% in that timeframe, but we want to be obviously on the conservative end and make sure we're covering those O and M costs. And then lastly is the timing of the NIS project. Right now, we're still waiting on a record of decision. And through discussions with staff, we've projected that 2023 is a reasonable start date for when we're going to have those higher cash calls. We do pay general operating of about $650,000 per year for this continuation of NIS, but that's when, we look at 23 and 24 is when those really high dollar costs start to come in. And that's changed since last year. And so we were looking at 2019, which is this, this coming year, or this year, when those costs were going to start to ramp up. And so because of the delay and everything else, we've moved that out, which has given us more time to build up cash balances and things like that. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And the treatment costs, you're talking about Northwell specifically, but of course, we're also getting treaty of water from other sources.
That's correct.
Are those fairly stable in terms of their contractual inflation rates?
They're fairly sta, we are projecting them fairly stable. However, for next year, I think we're looking at 7% increase for Greeley and a 4% increase for Fort Collins Loveland Water District. And so that's a little bit higher than what we've seen average over the historical past. But so we're accounting for a higher cost next year, and then we keep it at a more level rate in the future.
I remember, I think contractually, really, it's more or less, they tell you your number at the beginning of the year.
Pretty much.
Or.
Yeah, they told us 7%, so we have that information.
But there's really no, we have an average over five years or something that we can kind of guess what it might be?
Well, we can tell you historically. John might be able to say.
Probably in the future, 3, 3.9%. But you gotta look at, everybody's doing all these huge projects and they're all trying to build up their cash reserves, and you're seeing these rate increases coming up.
And has, is there an update about the NIS project and record of decision? Because the last two years, we've been told this is the year, and obviously, I don't think it still could come in 2019.
It probably will not come this year because the 401 cert is a required component of the record of decision. The state, the state does that, and they have until February 1st to get that done. They don't get it done by February 1st, it's automatically approved, and then the court will write that in, but they can take up to February. So we're now looking at probably April, because it looks like they're going to take all the time that they can take to get that done.
And then additionally, we're projecting possible litigation between that time.
Right.
Yeah, and then the extension out is accounting for that excess time before the project will actually start construction.
So everything that you've gone in and studied and are presenting tonight is taking all that into consideration? Because the longer that is, you know, delayed, the higher the cost.
I'll show you one scenario where we started 2023, two of them actually, and then one of them where we start in 20, those projects come in 2024. So one of the key drivers we wanted to mention was our growth projections. Right now, we've looked with, we've gone with the economic development team and pulled a platted, non-platted report and gone into great detail about where certain lots are, certain subdivisions may be coming in. And we've ended up with the projections that we're looking at right now. And so I'll point you to the bottom three. The total, which is what we're projecting at 100% growth based on the best knowledge that we have of those lots right now. And then the second one is total at 95% growth, and that's going to be scenario one that I'll show you in a minute. And then again, if we really want to kind of hedge our bets and say that we do believe growth will come in, but it may not be at 100%, maybe it's 80% of what we've seen so far, we're going to, we'll run a scenario for that as well and show you what the rate increases will look like at that point. So really what we're trying to show here is that there is possibly a decline in different lots coming into the future. And then we're also being conservative and seeing how that affects the different rates that we're going to show you tonight. Yes, sir.
I assume SFI is single-family equivalent or something like that?
That's right.
And through 2024, rain dance is fairly, I mean, it's plotted out. We kind of know that's what it's going to look like.
And they've also given us the projections.
They've given us their schedule and they predict that they'll be pretty much down in the next.
But then in 2025, you're really, I'm guessing, just sort of ticking a number saying it's probably going to be development of this number.
So we've, through the economic development report, we've had, we have a large, like, I think that's about 4,000 homes. We have this big number, and then we then use, fill them into each one of those slots. Obviously, the shorter ones, we're more confident about as we know that there's platted lots ready to be developed. And then there's also non-platted lots. And so that's what we take into account at the end there.
Yes, we may have. Well, we're, there's a reason why we look at these doing people every year, because we, you know, forecasting out future years is harder, but it is.
Okay. So the next piece I wanted to mention was that mill levy. And so it has not passed, but when we had created this, we had two different scenarios of if it passed and if it didn't pass. And so one of the things we wanted to show you was how that treatment cost trended with the 10% rate increases through 2024. And so you can see in the darker line there, our treatment costs go up quite a bit quicker than if they would obviously otherwise. So that's going to be one of the major drivers that would be increasing our rates otherwise for our general O and M and treatment costs. Next is our NIS projection. And so last year is going to be the gray, light gray bar, and then where we're at with updated costs is going to be the darker one. And so we have it delayed three years until 2023 for our first two scenarios that I'll show you. And then, as I mentioned, 2019, or yes, 2019 through 2022, we do show a projection of just general O and M that's asked to be paid as fees for ongoing operations to get this thing built. And so generally, the nexus behind what we're trying to show you here is as those larger bars have moved out in the future, we have more time to build up our cash reserves in order to have more flexibility in how we're going to pay for this project. As I mentioned at the beginning, the rate payer percentage that I spoke of last year, I think we were about around 15%. And so as we are able to build up more impact fees and then pay in cash instead of having to bond a lot of the project, that rate payer percentage drops. And our scenarios that we'll show you tonight is between about 8% and 10% instead of that 15% that we were looking at last year. So it's actually more in line with the financial goals that we were looking at of having growth pay for growth. So next, this is a graph that we had shared with you last year as well. And so we just wanted to show an average bill based on five K gals per usage, how the O and M stacked up, and then the capital. And so if we were to not raise rates at all, that's the orange line, that's staying flat there. And so we kind of run into issues as we bring in, we have to spend more and more for our O and M and our capital. And you'll see that over time, that capital portion does grow slightly. And so that average bill will be trending towards paying for more of that capital as well.
Is that first bar 2018?
That would be, I think, yeah, 2019. 2019, yeah. Okay, so I'll get into the scenarios. So I'll remind you all, this black bar at the top is where we were last year. And so that was 9% through 2026, and then we dropped down to 3%. And so again, we had to bring up, we had to build up cash a lot quicker at that point in order to pay for the NIS project at a time. And so since the delay has happened, we've brought in a couple of different scenarios, and that's going to be the orange, the blue, and the gray bar, where we're actually looking at 7% or 7.5% or even 6% depending on the different scenarios that we'll look at. So that's a quick overview of how they look, and then we'll get into the details here. So scenario, what we're calling scenario one is a 7% annual rate increase through 2028. We're looking at 95% growth projection, understanding when we were talking with cities, with your staff, that there could at some point be a downturn, but we don't know when that is. So we want to be maybe a little more conservative than the 100% growth that we're looking at. And so we wanted to take that into account. We're showing this in the earlier year, that 2023 as well. The next one is scenario two, and that, the only thing that changes is the growth percentage. So instead of 95%, we actually lower that to 80%. So we're seeing less impact fees coming into the, in the door. And so now we have to raise our gates in order to make up for that loss of cash there in order to pay for the project in the future. So a 15% decrease in growth only equates to about a half a percent increase in our rate. I will mention, at the very end of the projection, at the 7.5%, we are right at our debt service coverage of 120%. But it's still, it still works in our 10, nine-year timeframe. And then lastly, scenario three, there's two things that are going on here. We've kept it growth at 100%, however, we've moved our NIS projects back to 2024. So that gives us one extra year to build up those funds. And so because of that, we're able to drop our annual rate increase 1%. So that's really all I have for you this evening. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, but I just wanted to mention that the takeaways that we've kind of mentioned in those drivers is really the delay of NIS has allowed us to have a little more time to build up those impact fees, able to pay cash a little bit earlier. We're end up getting a bond, we're projecting bond amounts being less as well because of that cash coming in the door. And because of all of those, we actually have shown a decrease in the rate than what we were showing last year because of the delay. So if you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions? David?
Can you do that again?
Yeah.
The whole thing?
Yeah. Offline. So just curious, because there's terminology here that I don't know that I've ever heard, like growth execution.
Yes.
Other than in prisons or something.
Yes.
So today's population, it's as soon as 30,000 people. What does 95% growth execution look like? Are you saying that the population grows by 95% over some period of time?
Not quite. So all we're looking at is the single-family equivalents. And so this total line, the third, the one in the middle there involved, is going to be at 100%. And so if I'm saying growth execution, instead of bringing in 100 homes at 80%, we're only bringing in 80 homes. So that's all it means is that we're taking that number down a bit in order to be conservative of what we're projecting.
So the 100% is a 680. So we're projecting next year, we're going to grow by 6780 homes. The 95% is at 646, and the 80% is 544.
Correct.
So those are just, so we take those numbers, say, okay, well, if we, if we don't hit these growth numbers, the single-family homes, and the fees coming in don't come with them, what does that do to this model?
Yes, sir.
Now, you projected what we should have in the war chest by 2023, when the big dollars are due to NIS and what we, you know, that would, that will improve our boundary and lower our interest. Do you have any number in mind if we start these rate increases now at?
Yeah.
At a certain percent?
So at some point, and sit down if you can, at some point, because those dollar amounts are so large, and I believe it's right here, for example, as you mentioned, 2025 at 13 million, we're not amassing $13 million to pay in cash. There's going to be a point where we can deplete those impact fees, which is growth paying for growth. And then we'll end up bonding some of that project as well. And then in the future, as more impact fees come in, what we've modeled is that instead of those dollars going straight to pay for projects, they first go to pay for the debt that you then issued. So then you're, you as a rate payer are not paying on the debt for this growth project. So it's a, it's a bit of both where we do pay some cash out of normal operations, but a lot of that is going to be based off of the impact fees that we've gathered and then the debt that the impact fees will also pay for in the future. And so I don't have a specific number for you, but there's a, there's a couple of different levers to pull and an optimal kind of leverage point that you want to be at. Instead of paying all cash, for example, and now your plant investment fee is $80,000 or something. I don't, it's a made up number. But at some point, it has to be so high in order to gather all that cash at the beginning. Does that make sense?
Sure. Yeah, it does. Unfortunately.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Back on that growth chart, is this your biggest variable or the biggest, like, who knows, five years from now, what could be happening?
Yeah, the two biggest variables are the, when the project's going to start, those big checks need to be written, and then the number of taps coming in, because that's, that's what's bringing in those fees to pay.
And the third variable is how much the project is going to cost when it starts.
But again, I think we kind of know when it starts, probably within a two to three-year timeframe.
Well, I don't think we've got a record decision.
Well, if we're projecting 23 or 24, I think we're pretty close.
Yeah.
This is a total guess.
I think we have a pretty good guess on the, on the.
100%.
Oh, wow. We don't know when a downturn is going to happen, but we know how many lots are plotted, how many are going to go in the rain dance, what their plans are, and then the next couple big subdivisions that might come in in the next five years or so. Now, the risk part of this is how many, you know, do you think there's going to be a downturn in there, and how much does it affect Windsor? That, I don't know. So that's why we kind of made the different scenarios.
So is it safe to say the downturn is less impactful, obviously, the further out it happens?
Yes.
So if we got to 2024 without a downturn, we'd probably be pretty safe in terms of this.
If you're at 100%, yeah, that'd be great.
Even at 80%.
You're at 80%.
Yeah, I will just go back to these scenarios here, where we, scenario one and two, at that 15% difference, which is the numbers in the PowerPoint there that we show, is only a half a percent increase. And so you can kind of use that as, if it's another 15% lower, it's probably going to have to be at 8%. So it is a factor, don't get me wrong. But since we, as I mentioned, are bringing in less of those fees, the percent that our current rate payers are paying will have to be higher because there won't be enough, there won't be as much cash as there could be in the future.
So and the reason why we want to present these scenarios without a recommendation is because how risk adverse do you want to be for? You know, if, if, want to be really conservative and say, let's budget for the 80% growth, that's the highest annual rate increase that we would pick. So it's kind of what we wanted to present this information to you.
So that's the ask of us tonight, is to try to, is to hone in on one of these scenarios that we want to look forward with.
That's right.
I think, I mean, I think you have to do the one that's most fiscally, I mean, as conservative as possible, which is scenario two, I think. Because we still, I mean, while we're projecting about hopefully this record of decision, we've been hearing that for, I don't know how long, and I think you just, I, I wouldn't want to play, I mean, I wouldn't want to gamble that.
I agree.
And I don't know that we would have 100% of the growth execution either.
Well, in the worst case scenario is, NIS doesn't happen, we have funds to be able to use for.
Purchasing water.
Purchasing water, option C, B, E, or F, so.
And these rates can always be changed of the, so if these variables change.
We're going to review it every year just like this.
And so again, let's say, let's say, for example, a poor growth scenario two, 7.5% increase, and this next year, our growth rate's 110%. Next year, we're going to run the numbers, and then these are going to work good, but we're going to say, okay, if you're really conservative and want to increase 6%, and so these will drop over time, because we'll collect more money than we anticipated, and so future increases can lower. So there's no, you know what I'm saying? It is, just like last year, when these numbers were 9.5, 10%, and now by coming back, we had better growth and they're down to the sevens.
Well, let's hope we can get a good article in the paper that helps demonstrate that we're actually looking. But if we make that decision, does that start in January then, on our, on our billing? That we would increase that 7.5 in January in 2020?
Historically, we, we would adopt it here in December, and I think, and correct me if I'm wrong.
January 1, you'll see it on your bill in February, February.
Oh, February is when it would be the first.
Because of how we're billed back.
But it would happen.
Yes, ma'am.
Early in 2020.
I will mention, all of these scenarios are inclusive of the standard 3.5% O and M. half percent O and M increase that you have every year. So it's just, inclusive of that is not additional to.
I guess, Mayor, part of it is to go back to those financial goals, and of course, two of them were minimizing rate increase and having growth pay for growth. Obviously, there's tension there between what are your growth assumptions? You lower those and you increase the rate payers' impact. If I look at the, the projections of growth, other new developments having forty-one SFE, SFEs in twenty twenty, I think we've got more than that in the pipeline now.
Well, that's in, that's in our, in our water service area. So for example, you know, if you go up Bridge at Harmony, that's all Northwell. If you go up anything that's happening, you know, around County Road five, that's all Fort Con. Fort Con's leveling. So this is really just in our water service boundary, so it's, you know.
Gee Savas Scott, and looked at all of it.
Yeah, these are good.
And all the rain dance ones are removed too, because remember, they're dedicating wet water for all of their development. So it's only.
Rain dances removed?
Yeah, we actually remove them in the model.
We don't collect a, a cash and lube fee.
Yeah.
Because they're bringing their water to the table.
Yeah, so, so we're showing the numbers up here, but they're not, they're not built-in sorry, the water laws.
Yeah. We do collect the plant investment fee.
Yes, but your plant investment fee, but not the raw water figure.
Not, not water.
Any other questions? Is scenario two, I mean, I heard Barry say he liked scenario two. I think that's the one direction I'd go. Does everybody else?
I like three.
It's the conservative approach.
I just want to minimize impact rate there. And I think the growth numbers are so manufactured that we don't, a hundred percent of what? A hundred percent of best guess.
The water and sewer board, this chart would have said scenario one, but they were, this is different than what we saw last Wednesday morning.
That's correct.
Sorry, which is okay, that's okay, I'm just saying, they looked at the eighty percent growth, and that was their recommendation. Yeah.
What's with eighty percent?
And what you just explained about, it's really not eighty percent of a hundred, of six hundred and eighty, because that six hundred and eighty housing, single-family homes this year is townwide, and some of the townwide is not on this water rate.
Right.
Correct. So that growth was not in this particular water.
So what we've done is, as Shane was mentioning.
Right, or maybe some different system.
This is well Windsor.
This is, right.
Because Laramo is on a different water.
So if you look at the neighborhoods that would really be projected for growth, it's much fewer. So I think the eighty percent growth rate makes a lot of sense from that standpoint. That's why I was supposed to say that.
Because I'm, I'm afraid, I mean, we all hope it's a hundred percent growth execution, but it may not be. Then what are you going to do?
Maybe a hundred and twenty.
And we do review this each year, that was a good point.
There's too many variables, not tried to each year.
I have a question. If we go back in time, and I think I missed this meeting last year for worse, did we authorize a ten percent increase?
I think it was nine and a half.
Isn't that a total in two?
Like, two or three years ago, were we saying like ten percent for the next ten years?
We did, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I hope we can do another article that lets folks know that, hey, we re, we reevaluated, and so we are telling them exactly what we did. We have found we don't have to do that, and so we're doing a different number. It's not that ten percent.
Right.
So we are giving them a little bit of a tax break comparatively to what we had projected.
Growth pays for growth, sort of.
Hopefully. Mostly, if we grow.
Mostly, not a hundred.
It's true. It's a whole different thing if we're not growing.
Which scenario are you in favor of?
The baseline of six eighty.
I like two, but another question.
Yes, sir.
Did you plug in an increase in tap fees into this or not?
They do, they do escalate, yes.
They do escalate. Right now, Dean says a nine thousand.
So we were looking at the raw water fee, which will escalate. We don't, I think, look at the plant investment fee, but Siwan back here can, can let us know.
What you're, what you're saying.
The plant, is it the plant investment fee as well?
Yes, so we're applying three percent escalation on the plant investment fee.
And the, and the raw water. So everything is escalating.
Right.
Okay, and that entirely, the new tap fees will go toward down payment, so to speak. So I calculated out over two thousand times, by, into two thousand twenty-three, we'd have fourteen million at the current tap fee rate.
Is that just the plant investment fee?
Just plant investment fee.
Yeah, I think the plant investment fee, growing at a three percent, we well paid for the water treatment and plant upgrade we will need by, by twenty twenty, twenty three, and knock down growth goes. Because that's what that's going to go for, is that water treatment and plant upgrade.
We're currently projecting a full payment in cash for that.
Yeah, it's going to be all cash.
Oh, that's great.
That's great.
Good.
Right, so it's really, at least with respect to water rates, it's more the dedication.
It's the raw water.
And, and the price of that, I mean, in terms of cash and lube, that's, that is going to be all, it's going to be market driven, not.
What was that last part?
It's going to be market driven, not three percent a year.
I mean, it'll be the project driven, you wanted to talk about this, so.
Oh, yeah, okay. Sidebar later.
So again, a, a little bit of water strategy discussion with the board, so at some point, we're just going to be saving for NISP. We're not going to, correctly, to buy raw water, and so at that point, I think we can stabilize that raw water fee, benchmarking more to NISP, and kind of get out of the, the wild, wild world of CBT, where it goes up and up and up so much. So I think it would be good predictability for everybody. So you're right, right now, it has been a little bit fluctuating, but I think over time, and hopefully soon, we would like to give a little bit more predictability to everybody and, and kind of benchmark it. So again, that's kind of with our overall water strategy for NISP.
Well, there has been some conversation, I don't know how far it will go, about regional water collaborations, so that instead of bidding against ourselves, we actually all, you know, collaborate, and we're working together, so we're not driving up prices against each other, but we are together trying to, you know, pursue the same end result, and that's by as reasonable as we all can. So. Any other questions? Scenario two?
That's the big.
Except for maybe David, but I, I think, I think I'm hearing a consensus that that's where we would fall.
Great, we can defer that to resolution.
Okay. Okay, thank you, folks. Thanks.
Maybe not a consensus, but a majority.
Majority.
Thank you. Seven nine. Seven nine.
Seven nine for the resolution.
Okay.
I guess.
Resolution for rates, December nine?
December nine.
For the, yeah.
Okay, our next item is storm drainage fund fee increase.
How about Janine?
Let's see, we have a discussion. I'll recount more numbers, thank you, and now Mayor, thank you. You guys have the information in your packet regarding the storm drainage fund fee increase. David?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I, it's a self-funding enterprise of Town Windsor, as you know, and we're asking for an increase to the monthly basin user fee, and the monthly, the O and M, and then the future development improvements. But I thought I wanted to, what I wanted to do first was explain to you guys what the stormwater fee benefits are to the Town of Windsor. It's not often extremely clear. Storm sewer maintenance keeps all the streets in Windsor, not just a few here and there, but all of them, free from flooding, so that all of our residents can safely travel on our streets. Capital improvements that manage stormwater, like our drainage projects. Right in front of us, we're working to get the Chestnut Eastman Storm Drainage project done. Upsizing the Folkestone Pond to accommodate more stormwater. Street sweeping, that keeps debris out of all of the storm drainage facilities in Windsor. And of course, we all enjoy the benefits of having a clean river. That's one of our selling points here in Windsor, as you know. So we are looking to request an increase in the fund to catch us up, to get a lot of the capital projects done. We have a shortfall in the twenty twenty budget cycle for the capital fund requirements, capital, short-term capital requirements in the fund. We have an anticipated drawdown coming of two point six million on that, and we, we don't really have the uncertainty, like we've seen already with the water rates, on the inflows for future requirements. And we just believe it's really imperative that we do not fall behind significantly in our ability to fund any projects that may come up in the future, that, you know, we don't have the crystal ball.
And this is the Chestnut?
Yes, that's going to be the big drawdown on the fund this year.
What is that? Chestnut?
Yeah. Chestnut Street Drainage Improvement. That's.
It's, it's, it's a big, like, regional collector. We've got a lot of, lot of stormwater running off that area right now, it's been identified for many years. We, we budgeted a project this year, and Doug Roth elected to carry it into next year and make it kind of a bigger project, but it's definitely a, a big, kind of wide board for this project.
That's a neat, that's a neat. And, and these two, I'd like to add, are identified in our master drainage plan, and these, these fees and the structures for them is also identified in the master drainage So then, we're looking to increase that future development portion of the, of the fee, the monthly basin improvement rate, from point zero 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 seven two to point zero 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 seven three three, which represents a one point eight percent increase. But this will not have a huge impact on, on our residents. Fifty-eight cents over the course of the year, that's really not going to be a huge And then for O and M, we're looking to get a fifty percent increase in that impervious multiplier, increasing that from point zero 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 two zero to zero 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 two And the reason for that increase request is threefold. We have, we are funding a full-time equipment operator for Public Works. Fifty percent of the, the salary for that person comes out of the O and M fee.
Because that person will be a street sweeper, so it'll actually go into MS four and keep in. You know, a lot of people think you do street sweeping to keep your streets pretty, or pick up leaves. It really is to keep all these harmful constituents out of your storm drain system. So the operator will basically spend half of his life sweeping the streets, and the other half comes in snow, so that storm drains will pay half of the job.
It's directly associated with stormwater, for sure. And then, of course, we have some of the lower interest income due to the increased capital activity, where balance is going down, so we're not going to see as much interest income on that. And then we have some additional required resources due to the implementation of MS four program. So.
And this was presented to water and sewer board as well?
Correct. That's, it was. And then the, the customer average annual increase for an in-town resident would be a dollar thirty-four annually for that.
That's the combined, or?
Uh, that is, that is for the O and M, O and M increase.
Yeah, because, so the total, between the two is about two dollars a year.
It's a little less than two dollars a year for the average individual homeowner. And we expect to see about twenty-three, about twenty-four thousand for O and M funding, and a little over ten thousand for capital funding in twenty twenty. So, you know, it, it's not a great, huge impact, but it is needed in order to get the projects done that we have online. So, are there any questions?
That's what I wanted to ask you, isn't enough?
That's, that's a question.
Thirty thousand a year, right? Is what you're proposing.
That's a question that gets asked often. We're actually, we have not done any increase, we haven't asked for any increases per the master drainage plan scenarios for two years. So we're, we're lagging a bit behind on that, but the intent, of course, is to continue to get those increases and, and continue to build the fund as we go through. The way that Doug does set up these capital improvement projects, he doesn't do them, you know, every year, but he, like Shane said, he saves up for them, and, you know, so we can experience a high balance, and then we drop down to a lower balance. But if we continue with these increases, we expect to kind of be able to keep it evened out and have funds there, and, as we go through.
Are you projecting you'll have to have annual increases every year, then, of some kind?
It's built in to the, the master drainage plan already.
So I, I think we should have this conversation and analysis every year, like we.
But, well, it'll be like water, right? I mean, you'll do an analysis, and if it's not warranted, you may not, the board may, may not decide to move forward with that.
That's absolutely right.
Okay.
Future MS four requirements, because we're just, there's different phases of this, and we've projected, do you anticipate we're going to have to come back and have any significant increases as a result of additional MS four requirements coming online for us?
It's possible. You know, there's always the chronic staffing shortage in, in programs and.
That would be general fund?
Yeah.
That would be general fund.
But, but as evidenced by the.
No, we can do it out of this.
Enterprise fund?
We can do it out of the enterprise fund. Okay.
You just have to increase rates to cover that additional cost.
So we might anticipate year, two, three years down the road, more significant increases?
Possibly.
We don't know.
We don't know.
Okay. Okay. Because I'm saying, what Dr. Jones asked, if it's enough, you know.
Again, that's kind of tied to growth and.
But if we evaluate every year, we can make adjustments. Okay. I, I'm just thinking, it's good not to get in a situation where all of a sudden you have a big bump. If we know something's coming, it's maybe easier for people to have an incremental increase than all of a sudden have a big shock.
Right. Well, as I said, it's, it is, it is the master drainage plan to increase as needed. You know, but as we've seen, you know, we do have some unknowns as we're going.
Right, right. Okay.
One of the unknowns, kind of a bonus, was that, you know, we have been collecting permit fees, obviously not anything to hang your hat on as far as income or any of that, but, you know, eighteen thousand so far this year in permits, so, you know, we, we're starting a new program, so we're certainly finding out fences as we go.
David?
Yeah, sorry, I'm looking at the memo that came from you via Shane, and you're describing in there, there's four bullet, four listings. You have an O and M base fee of two twenty?
Correct.
So obviously, the funds from that are designated to deal with O and M.
Right.
And then you talk about the basin user fee, which apparently is maybe administratively split into future development and O and M.
Right.
So O and M is being funded by both the base fee, two twenty, plus some portion of the user fee?
Right. And the, the fourth one, the monthly basin user fee, that is the adjustable piece of this. The, the first one is two twenty per month, period. And then, based on your square footage of your home in the impervious area that you have, that monthly basin user fee is, it, it varies. Seventy cents.
Well, your impermeable square footage probably doesn't change with the money.
Well, no, but based on your lap, you know, you may, you may have a, a five thousand square foot rooftop, and you, you know, you're not going to be, you're going to be charged more than someone who's got a fifteen hundred square foot rooftop. who's got a 1,500-square-foot rooftop.
But once you determine what I'm charged, I'm going to be charged the same thing until we make a rate increase.
Yes.
So, are you more concerned about future development or O&amp;M?
Well, they're both pretty important. We've been working on that Chestnut Street 10th drainage project for a long time, and now we do have this extra full-time employee that we are funding, so those are commitments.
Is the Chestnut work considered O&amp;M or future?
It's a capital improvement project.
Funded out of O&amp;M or future development?
Future development. It's coming out of that monthly basin user fee.
I guess, the only reason I'm saying you have a 220 per count, it sounds like you have not asked to change that.
No.
And I'm curious if you've added 5 cents to that?
No, that's not part of this discussion.
Well, but you haven't finished your question, though. So, if we add, if we added 5 cents to that?
It was really trying to get, is O&amp;M the big concern of future development? And certainly, you're asking a 15% increase as to the portion of the user fee that goes to O&amp;M. And yet, the other opportunity to fund O&amp;M is through the base fee. So, if O&amp;M is the one that you're really looking for a large increase, 15 versus 1.8, is there another way to meet that need with a minor adjustment to the base fee that everyone will pay versus a 15% increase in the user fee?
I'll let Carl respond to that.
We looked at the actual base fee, and in my opinion, it was more equitable to actually increase the impervious multiplier and put the increase straight across the board of the 220. That's not saying we won't look at it in future. It just seemed more equitable at the time and probably more palatable to the ratepayers.
Yeah, because the smaller homes would provide some pretty service for, have a lower level of rains.
So, you just need our agreement out to move forward with the recommendation? What did, he stepped out of the room, but do you know what Water and Service Board recommendation was?
Yeah, it was to move forward with that.
Okay.
And just for, just that, I think whenever we go to Water and Service Board, if we could put that note and what the recommendation is, you know, it's just...
It usually comes in the resolution, though.
Yeah, it's just a little bit, yeah, but I think we do that because it was like, I knew you guys have gone and can do, but the rest of the board doesn't see that.
Yes, it's at the bottom of the memo there. Staff recommends that board approve, and a doctor requested increases to the monthly basin user fee and the new growth basin impact fee. So, I'm trying to include everything.
I think he was saying, put in that memo that we're already taking it to the Water and Service Board.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Was that what you were asking?
Yeah, it was.
Exactly, I'm sorry.
Okay. Is there anyone who wouldn't approve of moving forward with this recommendation?
Okay, it'll be in a resolution December 9. It'll be squared.
Thank you very much.
And we'll move on to item C. We're going to take these executive sessions separately. So, if anybody wants to step out one last time for another bite to eat now, please. Thank you, right?
Please go back.
And I guess they're stepping out on the map, Richard.
So, we've got those tabs coming. You get the hand to the guy upstairs.
That's the one said...
Yeah.